This is a regular session of the School Board Meeting of the School City of East Chicago. And the time is now 6:10. This, this, this is, the School Board is City, it's East Chicago Administration Building, 1401 East 144th Street, East Chicago, Indiana. This is also being shown via live stream at www.scec.k12.us. This is a meeting of the School Board in public for the purpose of conducting the school's corporation's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Trustee Gomez.
Present.
Trustee Smith.
Present.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Present.
Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Present. May we stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to this land, the United States of America, and to every body from which stands one nation under God, in the good soul for liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll have our mission statement from Superintendent Bornet.
The School City of East Chicago educates and empowers every student through aligned instruction, meaningful partnerships, and differentiated practices to ensure success in life, college career, and civic engagement.
We have the executive session, item 1.04, executive session, June the 23rd and June the 26th, 2025, Indiana Code 5-14-1.5-6. Item 201, approve of the agenda. Are there any comments from the audience? Get a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam President, make a motion to approve?
Approved by Trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by Trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. And now we have our presentation. Oh, yes, no, the presentation here. Item three. What's one of my things here? Okay, so we'll have the mission state, I mean, your statement and Dr. Bornet, superintendent's statement.
Thank you again. Good evening again. This is the superintendent's report for August 12th, 2025. We opened the 2025-2026 school year yesterday with a first day enrollment of 30, of 3,181 students. 424 of those students are new students. We welcome them to the School City of Chicago. Our attendance for day one is 86.83%. From the superintendent's chair, this was a great opening day of school, first day of school to start a very successful and well-intentioned school year. Congratulations to Washington School. They won the first superintendent's summer reading challenge with 155 hours logged over the summer. Let's give Washington School a hand. They are the recipients of the East Chicago Public Library's Traveling Trophy, so we hope that that trophy stays in the School City of Chicago and another elementary school or middle school steps up to the challenge for next summer. I have prepared a high-level summer presentation of our 2025 iLearn results. Mr. Torres, can we have that? Ms. Navarro, thank you. The board has been given a hard copy of that presentation. I want to take just a few minutes to talk about the progress we've made for our students on the state testing, specifically on iLearn. And the next slide. Our third graders are 14% proficient, who have demonstrated proficiency for the 2025 school year. Our next slide was fourth grade. Fourth grade is demonstrating 9% proficiency. I do want to remind our School Board and our community that our fourth graders from the 24-25 school year are COVID kindergarten class, and so you will see a consistent pattern around their proficiency when we look at the stores in total. Fifth grade, 14% proficiency. Sixth grade, and here is a cause for some celebration, 20% proficiency in our sixth grade class. Seventh grade, 14% proficiency. And eighth grade, 18% proficiency. This is for our English Language Arts. So on average, we are holding pretty strongly consistently with the 15% in reading. Now let's look at math. For math, we do have 20% proficiency with our third grade, which is a cause for celebration. So we are very proud of our primary grades, kindergarten first and second, for the work they've done to prepare our students for third grade last year. We are expecting really big things of that third grade class sort of shift the momentum. Fourth grade, we do have 12% proficiency. Once again, this is the kindergarten COVID class. Fifth grade, 13%. Sixth grade, 18%. Once again, that sixth grade class, we want to celebrate them across the district of really pushing our kids to get them prepared for middle school. The challenge for middle school is to maintain that momentum and keep them moving. Seventh grade, our proficiency is at 6% for seventh grade, and at eighth grade is at 7%. Obviously, we do have some challenges at the middle school, and some of that was in the absence of qualified math teachers at the secondary level. We will address that this year at the middle school by moving qualified or certified math teachers at the middle school. This will set our students up for greater success when they venture to the high school. So those are our iLearn results at the grade level. Now let's look at them at the school level. And we're still looking at proficiency. And so we do have some very good reasons to celebrate at the proficiency, at the school level. So Harrison does have the highest math proficiency for iLearn 2025. Let's give Harrison a hand. And Block does have the highest ELA proficiency for the 2025 school year. Let's give Block school a hand. And it's important to note that when we look at particular buildings, for example, Block, we are celebrating their efforts, but we know that Block still has a math proficiency challenge. So we will be launching additional supports for Block for that area. I'm sorry, the next one. We always like to look at how they are across schools and comparing to schools, even though each school is individual and has their own set of challenges, a variety of circumstances which we can't control, such as who is certified or teaching in front of them, or do they have a teacher who's not certified or permanent sub. We do also show the iLearn ELA math proficiency by grade in school on this slide. And here is Block again. And now let's talk about our high school. So for high school, we do have ELA separately at 31%, and here we'll see that math is a challenge. And when we look at our combined reading and math, we're at 4.2. So we do celebrate the fact that Central did have a tremendous increase of almost 20% in their SAT score for EBRW, English-based writing with evidence. Let's give Central a hand for that achievement. And now when we look at proficiency, you heard me say the average is around 15%. So 15% last year for ELA, around 13 or so, .8 for math. And I do want us to be mindful that we have 38 more students testing last year than we did in the 23-24 school year, and being able to maintain right around that same proficiency level is to be commended. But obviously, when you get new students in, you don't know their background and their skill set, but I think we did a pretty good job to maintain that. Then when we look at our ELA proficiency specifically versus 2024 and 2025, we do want to call out that Lincoln, sixth grade, had the highest combined ELA and math proficiency. Let's give Lincoln a round of applause. McKinley specifically, third grade, had the highest combined ELA math proficiency. McKinley did greatly contribute to the third grade math proficiency scores. Let's give them a hand. I'm sorry, I'm pressing the button over here, but Ms. Navarro, the next slide. I want to also talk about growth. So we can become very disheartened when we only look at proficiency. So the state does provide us a means to see if our students are constantly moving and where we're moving the needle. So this next slide does cover our ELA growth and gains. And I just want to shout out Washington Elementary School. They had the highest ELA growth for the 24-25 school year. Let's give Washington a hand. When we look at math, we are faced with the same challenge we've already called out Harrison, but once again, just let you know as well, Harrison is doing very well in terms of math proficiency, in terms of what they performed last year and what they did this school year. And then math growth gains. We are going to, even though, and I want to make sure that we contrast this, so yes, Block has some challenges with getting proficiency, but they had huge gains in math. So we want to call out and celebrate Block. I believe it is 79, is that what I see? Almost 80% growth in our students at our seventh and eighth grader Block. Let's give them a hand. So in summary, all of our students, if you look at, toggle back between the ELA slide, go back two slides for me, Ms. Navarro. And if you see the blues, which are growth, on ELA, which are our middle schools, Lincoln, McKinley, and Washington, when you go back to math, you have Harrison and Block. All of our buildings, third through eighth grade, grew. Let's give all of our leaders, our teachers, our instructional coaches a hand for making sure that all of our students move. Our paras and our administrators. This was accomplished by being intentional. Intentional with our time and our talent, intentional with our efforts and our resources. This presentation was shared with our staff last Wednesday during our convocation. It was an opportunity to keep them inspired, to keep doing what they're doing, to maximize instructional time, to maximize our distributed instruction, as well as during our win time. So once again, thank you. We will provide a more detailed discussion when our iRead scores have been released to the public, to the board via work session, which will be set at a later date. SEC began the 25-26 school year with 69 vacancies, and we currently have 40. Those 40 vacancies are across all positions in the school system, including paraprofessionals, security, social workers, et cetera. Even with the nationwide teacher shortage, our human resources team managed to start the 2025-26 school year with only 13 teacher classroom vacancies, having a fill rate of 95%. Let's give kudos to our HR staff. I do want to encourage the board to review partnering with a substitute staffing agency, such as the one presented earlier this school year, ESS. We could have had a 100% fill rate provided with certified teachers instead of starting off the 25-26 school year with 13 classrooms starting their child's education with a substitute teacher. In the long run, this will impact student outcomes. We held our annual back-to-school rally in our first parent university since 2019 on Saturday, August 2nd, and almost 1,400 were in attendance. Let's give our family and community engagement and school improvement team and those committee members a round of applause. Thank you to all of our school-level staff, our administrators, as well as all of our community partners and university partners who did come out to support and be a vendor in our community, our back-to-school rally and parent university. And now, with great pleasure, that we introduce two new administrators to the School City of East Chicago. I would like to have our new Lincoln Elementary School principal, please come forward, Dr. Dr. Estes is a, oh, that podium right there. Dr. Estes is a 30-plus-year-career educator, and we are very proud and fortunate to have him and his expertise taking over the helm of Lincoln Elementary School. Dr. Estes, will you please have a few words to say?
I do have patience, so I know this is a process, but sometimes you have to wait for opportunities to knock. But I'm, we're prepared. This data gives me more drive just to, I'm a competitor. The president from Washington, I saw her, I told her I was coming for me, you know, so it's just how I am. I'm so excited, the first day of school, the staff, we were all in white, showing unity. How are we going to do, and hopefully this is our steps that we're going to make towards progress. I got just three priorities that are just focused on attendance, reading math proficiency, and also just building a strong and foster culture and climate at Lincoln so we can progress to be looking more blue opposed to that red on the data. So I appreciate you all for voting me down. I'm prepared, I'm ready, so.
Thank you, Dr. Estes. We'd also like to introduce to the public Ms. Katherine Brodenex, our new career technical education director.
Good evening, School Board members and community and staff that are here. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to work with East Chicago Public Schools and to make sure that I'm working with Central High School and Block High School, and really K-12, to grow CTE programs. My goals are to increase the quality of programs that are being offered and possibly grow programs if possible. I want to grow those programs and the quality of those programs through dual credits, industry certifications, and work-based learning. And CTSOs, if you don't know what CTSOs, those are student organizations such as Skills USA or DECA or things like that, to make sure that we are bringing in those quality programs will be most beneficial for anything that is related to CTE. We want to make sure that we are pathfinding students and they're graduating with background from East Chicago that will carry them into the workforce, into the college setting, and or into the military. So thank you for giving me the opportunity, everybody, and I can't wait to work with you all.
Thank you, Ms. Brodenex. And Madam President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll have Executive Director BS's Mrs. Simmons.
Good evening. How's everybody? So I'm going to give the update on the summer projects here in the district. I'm going to start with, let's start with the lights at Washington. The lights at Washington was due to start in June, but when we moved summer school, I had to delay it. So we are just starting the light project at Washington. Actually, we started yesterday, and it should be done within two weeks. The outdoor project will be done like two weeks after that. We are putting in two lamp poles outside in the parking lots where it was, I think one was knocked down and was never replaced, so we're going to replace that one, and then we're also going to replace one on the side of the track, so it could be more lit on that side. So those are Washington projects that is going on. As far as Washington, I want to go into the HVACs at each school also. Washington actually got a new HVAC system last year. We have been having some ups and downs at Washington, but we actually came to the conclusion in what the problem was this week. So we are addressing changing the filters out. So the old HVAC system did not require the filters to be changed every 30 days. We only change them once a year. So this new system requires the filters to be changed every 30 days, and within 30 days they will stop blowing air. So we got emergency filters yesterday for Washington. Now Washington is on an order, automatic order, for changing the filters. So that's chiller also at Washington. Chiller was not put on the original HVAC system, so we are doing some upgrades to the chiller at Washington to make sure that it's going to be suitable to fit, to fit the new HVAC system over there. Block has been amazing. Probably should not have said that out loud, but I did. Block has been amazing. Block has been cool all summer long. I think we had one day that it might have went down, I think when I heard when I was out, but everything is up and going. Move over to Lincoln. Lincoln has some challenges. Lincoln has one actual chiller that is not working at all, and it was due to the fact that some of the parts are not there. So the one chiller that is working, it is trying to cool the whole building, which is doing an okay job, but we also have some unit vents in the classroom that has never been serviced before. So we're replacing some unit vents, and we're doing some plumbing work also over there. I do have an understanding of, that I got today, that our cafeteria and our gym is a little warm, so I did call the vendor back out to actually look over the cafeteria and the gym chiller, because it's connected to the chiller issue that we're having. I'm going to move over to Kerry Gosh. So Kerry Gosh has a temporary chiller sitting on the property, and actually, we did this last year. So the temporary chiller was started, and also the air handlers were put into service. So we had a hiccup, I think, two nights ago, maybe three nights ago, where one of the belts and one of the air handlers started to smoke and burn. So we are, have now taken care of that issue with the vendor that also assists us in Central High School. I'm going to move over to Central. I'm doing a circle so I can remember. Moving over to Central, yes, Central. I first, first, I would like to give kudos to my maintenance team that has been in Central all summer long without any major complaints. They have helped out the vendors. They have cleaned up much, much as they can there with the vendors working on the bathroom. Kudos to my maintenance team. Hands down, when I asked them, hey, I can move y'all to another building, and they kept telling me, we got to get this done. So most definitely kudos to my maintenance team there. So Central has a little bit of a hiccup. So Central was due to have a HVAC replacement this summer, or the start of a replacement, because there is 15 air handlers in Central. The original quote that was given to us for Central was to replace the guts of the air handlers. When the engineer went in to look at the guts- When the engineer went in to look at the guts of just replacing the guts, they basically came, came back and said, yes, we can try to replace that guts, but if the new parts come in and they do not fit, we're still gonna have to tear the air handler down. So at that point, there is no sense of trying something, and it's gonna cost me more for you to do it. So we reverted to air handler one, two, and three, and four, and five, to be the first on the list to get, start the replacement, and we'll be going out for bid for that pretty soon. I do believe, I think I said it for the beginning, in September, beginning of October. So that project is gonna require, air handler one, if anybody knows Central, it sits over the gym, over the pool area, it's huge. It's in a room, big as this room. So it's gonna, we're gonna have to actually cut a hole in the back of the school to get the air handler in, which is another whole subject that I have not even thought about yet. But to get it in, I'm gonna have to have interestway through the back of the school. So we're gonna try to figure that out in the best uncomfortable way and the best inexpensive way to get that air handler in there. I did have a vendor, Hayes Mechanical, I want to give props to them. They worked for two days straight at Central to get something going, bypassing whatever they had to do. And they got it, they got it going to a good point that they are comfortable there now. We do have our ups and downs in the office. Well, we also are working on that, that, but as far as students, we tried to take care of that area with the teachers also. I'm gonna move to Harrison and McKinley. Harrison McKinley had a total HVAC overhaul last summer. Harrison McKinley has been going well this summer. We also had a couple of down days of heat. Same thing that we did not know about Washington, we did not know about Harrison McKinley. Those filters have to be changed every thirty days. And it's not gonna blow air. So we got enough filters on our property now to go in, and we're also training our maintenance staff to go in and make sure that they can change the filters and not the crafts. Also, our number ones is now gonna have access to their HVAC system on their computers. So when they call in and say that there is nothing flowing heat or air, they'll be able to see where it's at and then direct the vendor to that part of what needs to be taken care of. That is the HVAC system, did I forget a school? I don't think I did. No, okay. That, that's the update on HVAC system in the district. Any questions? Okay. So we're gonna move on over to Central High School.
I want to ask a question.
Uh huh.
You have an next question?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, any questions from the audience?
Audience first.
Any questions from the audience?
Carrie, Carrie Gosh has a standalone chiller.
And you're gonna ask him. Trustee Gomez.
It's my understanding that the air handling unit, you're speaking of particularly, I think number five is completely broken, and that shaft is, I've heard anywhere from six to eight weeks to build that shaft, is that correct?
To my knowledge, that they pulled it out and rebuilt it. And air handler five handles the cafeterias, and if any student is here, I do believe we have air. And Ms. Daniels, do we have air in the cafeterias? To your knowledge? Okay. Yes, okay. Okay, so that's part of the air handler five also, and also the air handler five also serviced two and three floors.
So in general, how, how long is it gonna take to get the units up and running?
I will have to ask the vendor on that part.
Okay, thank you.
No, the air handler is going. If they have air conditioner in those places, that was air handler five.
Right.
So when I originally went out, and I went out to the second vendor and asked them about the cafeterias, and they said air handler, because I thought it was air handler eight, but it wasn't, it's air handler five that serviced the cafeterias. So that air handler, if we have air conditioners in air in those cafeterias, air handler five is working somewhat, okay? So there's like, it's not working, it is working somewhat.
Okay.
Anybody else with any more questions? Mrs. Simmons, I got one question.
And it was just questions over the HVAC, I got some more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need to bring, no, no, it's HVAC questions.
Okay, the, the filters, you say they had to be changed every thirty days? Did that mean all the schools?
Uh, it's gonna be all the schools. But usually, since I've been here in the district, they had only been changing it once a year. And that was Mr. Ritchie would go at the beginning of January and change all the filters. But as learning more about the new HVAC system, possibility, we need to put that practice in all the schools, so that's where we're gonna start. So I talked to Ms. Charmaine today, and we have an alert for number ones and number twos, to make sure that all filters are changed by the fifteenth of the month.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
One more, one more question. I remember the board took a tour last year with Dr. Burney of the buildings, and I thought the, I'm pretty sure that they had put new heating, cooling systems in at Washington Elementary.
Mm-hmm, it's all HVAC system went in.
So the only issue then is the filters?
Yes.
We just found that out?
Uh, yes. Actually, we just found it out from a vendor that came in, yep.
So have they?
All three schools, all three schools. No one, I'm gonna rephrase that. No one indicated to the maintenance staff that they had to change the filters. So it might have been indicated to somebody other than the maintenance staff to actually take care of the building. So it started with McKinley and Harrison. I talked to the vendor, I'm like, we having problems. And he came out, and he's like, since everything is under warranty, he came out, he's like, you have to change these filters every thirty days. So that in turns went over to Washington. Same thing, with the new HVAC systems that we have in place, those filters need to be changed.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Ms. Pedro, did you have one?
No, I'm finished with.
Okay. Bathrooms at Central, I don't know if everybody had a chance to take a tour of the bathrooms at Central, very proud of them. The decor, I want to say was our superintendent's choice of the decor, which matched fine, because when he first said, I'm like, uh-uh. But no, Central's bathrooms are completed. I have heard nothing but rave reviews about them, especially the Z-Wing, because that was our biggest thing, and then the common area. So the common area was originally was not on the initial walkthrough of the bathrooms. So Dr. Burney alerted me to that over during back-to-school, and I called the vendor, vendor said, no problem, we'll take care of it. They going in now and taking care of the common area bathroom. So they're gonna look just like the rest throughout the schools. So, yes, so I'm happy to let the students know at Central, they got a decent bathroom with a door that they can use and close now.
Is that all the bathrooms, or just?
Yeah, I think it's all the bathrooms, yes.
Just girls and boys bathrooms, right?
Yes, girls and boys.
Okay.
Yep, so Central's kitchen. They were attempting to take out the freezer, which is a walk-in freezer and refrigerator. The vendor went in and says, it's nothing but a simple project, it wasn't simple. So when they went to take the freezer out, they realized if they pulled that freezer out, everything above that is gone. So now we have a construction team coming in in two weeks to replace that fish freezer totally with the support of, supporting everything above the freezer, because it was literally, and I, I expressed this to them, but they didn't understand, it was literally built in that wall. It's not something that you can just take out and put back in. So that is gonna be completed within the next couple of weeks. We actually have a vendor also, I think we approved over the summer, the elevator system at Central in the athletic area, going up to the second floor of the gym. That, that project is gonna be bid, has been bid it out, and will be starting within probably the next month. And that is the update of the projects that I can remember, but there's probably more projects, but those are the ones that was happening over the summer in the district. Any questions?
Yes, Trustee Smith.
Yes, I just want to say thank you for the bathrooms. I've been fighting that for how many years? Yeah, thank you. And I just want you all to know, everybody wants to blame everybody for something's not working, but when you go into walls of a school or a building who has not been maintained for over twenty, twenty-five years, you open up a wall, you'll be surprised at what you might find. So stop complaining and just go with the flow, because this should have been done years ago. When we asked for procurement and we asked for a general manager, I'm just, I'm not, I'm, I'm taking up for my students and my tax dollars. These are things that we have been asking for, for a while. But because we could not stay on one accord, this is what we end up with. So I'm sorry, everybody had to go through a heat wave, whatever, but it is what it is. And I thank you, Ms. Simmons, for doing the best that you possibly can to try to bring up this, you know, make things work. Now, with new systems now, even with myself, I had to find out, I have to change the filter every thirty days. If not, it kicks off, and that, when that kicks off, then everything else falls out of order. So I just want to say, thank you, I know it's been trying, and I know everybody's been at you, but thank you.
Oh, no problem. Also, I would like to thank Central's crew due to the fact that they have been working in heat all summer. But also, all the maintenance crew this year, they really stepped up and got the schools as clean as they could with the shorthand that they had, because they did have shorthand staffing, but they stepped up this year to get it clean, to get it, for the kids to come in, for the staff to come in. So our maintenance team really stepped up this year, and I, I really appreciate them for all their help, even the days that some of the other schools was hot, our maintenance team stepped, stepped right up.
Thank you.
Ms. Simmons, I do have one question. You mentioned the roofs earlier, and that triggered a thought. I think at some point in time, we discussed, we had mentioned that there was some additional work, roof work that needed to be done at Central.
Central's pool roof is, we, the story on Central's pool roof, in 2023, we had that roof replaced. From then to now, the roof has uplifted.
In two years?
Yes, in two years. So at that time, I brought my insurance company in due to the fact that it was two years. So when a jester came out, he said it was the, I do believe I'm gonna say wind damage. So on that note, I went out for bid for that, and actually, that is coming up in front of you in the next meeting, where I do have a person that's gonna put a roof in.
Ms. Simmons, just one more thing, you said wind damage.
Yes, they said it was wind damage.
Okay, this might sound kind of off the wall, but you know this area now is a FEMA area. Do you know that?
No, 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 no.
So let your insurance company know, because mine let me know that when things like that happen, we are in a FEMA area, and if you don't know that, they're not gonna tell you. So that's something, maybe you should ask your insurance adjuster, because we are in a FEMA area, and they were able to help me get my situation done, and this is a corporation, just like mine is a corporation. So that's just something to look into. I'm not saying you can or you can't, but.
Oh, no.
It won't hurt to try, but this, they have judged it, this a FEMA area due to the high winds and all the things that we had from last year, when the roofs were blowing and trees. So this is, they have labeled this a FEMA area, so see what happens.
I will most definitely pass it along to the insurance adjuster.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, Trustee Rodriguez, you have anything to say?
No comments at this time, but thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam President, I do have one. And the, I want to say the cafeteria A. I've noticed that the freezer next to the door had a, had a opening, and I'm not sure if they were bringing chillers through that or, or maybe trying to bring in the fan, but I don't, I don't, the, the whole part of that wall was on the ground. And this was at the parent university, I was just wondering if that was ever fixed? And if, if that freezer is gonna be working again in operation for?
So that is probably what they were trying to bring that freezer in, in parts, right there. Yes, and, and actually, it went on hold for a little too long over time, and that's when we got confirmation on what we're doing, so yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Trustee Taylor, can you hear us? Have anything to say?
Yes, yes, I can hear.
Okay, can you, you want to say anything to Mrs. Leela?
No, ma'am, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thanks, okay, I got the next question. The fitness center, do we ever get anything done over there? Far as the roofs is concerned, air conditioner?
Air conditioner, to my knowledge, is working, am I correct?
It's working on one side, from my understanding.
I'm sorry?
Working on one side, from my understanding.
Okay, that has not been relayed to me. I think when I received the email from Mr. Peterson this week, he said that it was working fine. I will most definitely reach out to him and email to see what's going on over there.
Okay, and what about the roof over there?
No, we have not did anything with the roof over there.
Yeah, okay. And then one more thing, I noticed that when it rains, like it rained today, and the water just sits, sits and sits in spaces where people have to park their cars, and it sits after it finished raining. So somebody was telling me today that we probably need a drain system over there, or something over there, I don't know.
On Central's parking lot?
No, no, the fitness center, when you come out of there, there's water just sitting.
At the front door?
All in the parking lot, you can't, you gotta, probably almost have some boots on to get out.
Okay.
And it sits there for like, for like three or four days. So I figured I would ask you that question, if you knew anything about that.
Uh, no, actually, I will go over tomorrow with the AD to look at that area.
Oh, okay.
Okay. He's, he's over the fitness center. We didn't know, we didn't know it was a puddle. So, so we will address that tomorrow, yeah, he got drafted.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, no problem. And so what about the, I know we have a finance meeting set up on the twentieth.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
It's a work session finance meeting.
Okay, but anyway, these items that you gave us, credit card, property taxes, we're gonna go through all this on that day?
Yes, we will go through property taxes.
I know you gave it to us, but I know we always get these things, but we never have any understanding, explanation as to how these are read. So you're gonna go through all this, all of this that we've received in the past, as well as this?
Yes, it will be a little bit more detail.
Okay. Okay, then, that's all I have to say. Anybody else got any questions? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Simmons.
Okay.
Now we'll have the consent agenda. Are there any public comments from the audience on the consent agenda? Negative motion, please, for the consent agenda?
Madam President, make a motion to approve the consent agenda, item five.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by Trustee Smith, are there any questions? Madam Secretary?
Madam President.
Yes.
I do have a question. Under the consent agendas, the approval of claim docket, I've been made aware that there's a number of invoices that are sitting, that are past ninety-plus days without being paid.
Okay.
Do we have a practice, Dr. Burney, on, on payment for, to vendors?
Can we discuss what, which vendors have not been paid in ninety days? Because my team, anything that comes in, it goes straight to the docket.
Okay, I don't, I don't have enough information right now.
Okay.
Share with you, but we can talk about it later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
No.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Now we go to new business. Approval of contract renewal for the trio of 2025-2026 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Are there any, can I get a motion?
Madam President, move for approval of six point zero one, I'll second.
Motion made by trustees, uh, Rodriguez, and second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Um, six point zero two, approval of dual credit memorandum of understanding renewal with Purdue University twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion, second?
Madam President, make a motion to approve six point zero two.
Motion made by trustee Gomez?
I'll second that motion.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Six point zero four, approval of contract renewal for Project Rebuild for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Madam President, just a point of order, we skipped over six point zero three.
Oh, I did, okay. Well, six point zero three, approval of contract renewal for parenting institution for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get a motion?
Madam President, make a motion to approve six point zero three.
Motion made by trustee, uh, Gomez?
I'll second that motion.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Uh, are there any comments from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Six point zero four, approval of contract renewal for Project Rebuild for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Can I get a motion? Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion?
Madam President, make a motion to approve six point zero four.
Second.
Second, motion made by trustee Rodriguez and second by trustee Smith. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam President?
Yes.
We just have a brief overview by, uh, Dr. Bornay?
Yes, yes, it's just truancy.
What was the question? Let's see, Ms. Daniels is president. We're gonna ask Ms. Daniels to come. She's willing to point a contact for this program.
I'm sorry, Ms. Daniels. I, I think we were missing some, um, information when we had our work session. So if you could just give us a real brief overview of this program.
Okay. So Project Rebuild, it's, um, one of our partners that is being renewed again for the third year. They have a multiplicity of services. So one of them is to address our truancy. When some of our parents are court ordered to services, they, um, provide those services. It could be anything from resources that have caused the actual truancy. So say, for instance, a family is homeless and our kids are having a difficult time getting to school or they don't have a permanent home. They help them find housing. If the parent has lost a job, they help them look for employment. If they need help with utilities, they need the down payment or anything of that nature, that's an example. They also help with our McKinney Vento students. If the parents have been seeking housing for, um, sometimes three to six months, sometimes longer than that, they continue to search because the rent is kind of too high when you're starting all over again. So they do everything they can to connect those parents to resources for, um, security deposits and first month's rent. In addition to that, if the parents are court ordered to like parenting classes, they can provide those classes as well.
Thank you. And I, I do remember one of the other questions we had was for attorney Snow and how this works with the city council ordinance for truancy.
Uh, I, I'm sorry. I think that, uh, they're two separate things. I think that, um, the truancy ordinance for the city is more of a program to, uh, enforce the truancy laws against, uh, adult members of the family. I think typically the truancy, in terms of truancy being a type of offense, it's typically unique to the juvenile. So, um, I think that the town ordinance or the city ordinance is more of a, an enforcement mechanism. Um, I believe, not sure whether that, off the top of my head, whether that goes through Chicago City Court or Gary City Court. But, um, Project Rebuild, I think, is a little bit more inclined towards providing the services to, to go along with, um, the enforcement mechanism you have. So I think that, um, Project Rebuild probably could be a component of what the family is asked to do or part of the, the assistance that they can receive as they participate in the truancy court program. Um, I, I think they, they're kind of intended to dovetail together, but I think they're two separate, uh, entities.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Daniels, obviously, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding.
Yes, you're correct. Any further questions?
Thank you.
I want to ask the question. So are you, um, are the schools still sending out certified mail to the, uh, parents' house of the kids that are truancy?
Yes, and they're also meeting with the parents as well.
And they go to the houses in Chicago, wherever these kids live? Do they go to Chicago?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Okay, because I know we have students from all over. That's why, you know, I want to know, did they go to Munster? Did they go to, you know, we have kids come here from all over.
Yes. I do know they, um, connect with the parents throughout Lake County, but I'm not sure about Chicago.
I know. Oh, well, I mean, you know, we have them in our schools, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
And, uh, on that note, um, I think one of the other questions that came up during the work session was relative to, um, how, and you would probably know more about this, how this relates with the work the deans are doing.
In what aspect?
Um, are the, so are the, what role do the deans play in? Uh, do they do the referrals to this group? Or how does, how does that work between the two?
Okay, no, the social workers and, um, the liaisons, we send out the referrals. So we get the referrals from whoever's in charge inside the schools. That could be the assistant principal or the dean. It's different in each school. When we receive the information that we need to send a referral, we send the referrals out on the forms that are provided by the provider via email. And once those, um, referrals go out, they assign a staff member to that family and they begin the services.
Great, thank you.
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
So it sounds like it's more of a case-by-case basis for each child.
Yes.
Given, given that, is there any way you could tell, tell us exactly how many, how many, uh, cases that they may have had in one year? Or maybe have them possibly do a presentation so that we have a clear understanding as to what this particular group does and how, maybe how we can help as well?
Are you referring to all the partners or just this?
This, this particular group. But if, if you want to maybe have a work session, we can actually invite them all, that'd be great.
I sure can. Um, we do keep a tally. I did not bring that list with me today, but I do have an accurate count of how many they served for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. You may have some providers that may have over a hundred referrals, but it's depending on the nature of what is needed for the family. So, um, an example would be Jimminis Corporation. They have a wraparound service. So that entails, um, therapy, um, be it individual, group therapy, all the needs that are mental health. They also provide services for housing. They provide resources. They provide clothing and food. So you may have a, a partner of that nature receiving more referrals than the others because they are detailed in the services that they offer. An example would be like Top Twenty. They are a dance program, but they have a support service for parents. So we partner with, um, Pastor Kelly Williams, and they're a food bank. And Top Twenty would go out and service our McKinney Vento students, be it if these students are independent and they don't have parent involvement or if it's a parent involved and they deliver the food to their home. So you may have a hundred over here at Jimminis and you may only have twenty. At Top Twenty, it's based on the need. And you can have, um, five children with the same issue, but that's individual. When you make a plan, you have to meet the need of the family.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just got one question now. Um, because I know we were gonna ask the board, ask to have a work session with the truant officer because we only have, we only have, what, one truant officer? That's it? Or how many do you have? You just only have two?
Two, that I know of.
You have two, to service, to service all the schools?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Daniels.
You're welcome. Any additional questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, six point zero five, approval of memorandum of understanding with United Way for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Madam President, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, I'm moving too fast, ain't I? Okay, uh, yeah, do, uh, okay, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Okay, now, six point zero six, approval memorandum of understanding with United Way.
Madam President, six point zero five.
Yeah, six, oh, wait a minute, I must have the wrong, I must have a, a different agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I got the right one. Approval of Jimminis for twenty twenty-five school year. I'm sorry, Ms. Daniels. Okay, we have your name down here for that, too. Uh, yes, but are there any questions from the audience? Okay, can I get a motion for six point zero five?
Madam President, I can make a motion for zero point six five.
Second.
Made by trustee Smith.
Second.
Second by trustee, uh, Gomez. Uh, now, are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Six point zero six, approval of memorandum of understanding with United Way for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion?
Madam President, I, I mean, for approval of six point zero six.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Gomez, second by trustee Smith. Are there any questions from the board?
Excuse me, but, uh, Mr. Smith, would you like to address the board about this memorandum?
Well, first of all, I want to say, uh, good evening to everyone and thank you for inviting me. I'm Pete Smith and I'm labor and community liaison with the United Way Northwest Indiana. What's your, you have a question? Is that what you said?
No, it's just, if you could just briefly explain the memora- memorandum of understanding?
Well, on behalf of the CEO, the new CEO, uh, for United Way, Chris White, he asked if I would step in and, and accept the MOU, um, from the board. He's, he's reviewed the, um, MOU and he's in agreement with, uh, with the program or with the MOU that you guys put together for us. So I want to thank you for that. Uh, it just shows that you have a clear understanding of, of what's going on in our community and, and the foresight to, uh, reinvest in the East Chicago community and Northwest Indiana. Specifically, though, East Chicago. So, um, any, is there any questions you?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay, can I get a, um, let's see here. So any more questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Approval of contract renewal for Here and Haven for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion?
Madam President, I can make, make, make a motion for six point zero seven.
Motion, motion made by trustee Smith, second by trustee Gomez. Uh, are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Uh, six point zero eight, approval of contract renewal agreement for Aswater for July, I mean, for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion?
Madam President, make a motion for approval for six point zero eight.
Motion made by trustee Smith?
Second.
Second by trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Six point zero nine, approval of contract renewal agreement for Donna Marchant for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Are there any questions from the board? I mean, from the audience? Can I get a motion?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item six point zero nine.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez?
Second.
Second by trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Six point ten, approve of psychological contract renewal for gene dealing education services for twenty-five, twenty-six. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for six point ten?
Madam President, move for approval of six point one zero.
Motion made by, motion made by Trusty Gomez, second by Trusty Rodriguez. Rodriguez, are there any questions from the board?
Madam President?
Yes.
Just to follow up, Dr. Burney, I know we are missing some documents.
Right.
On this, could you share with us a little more on this program?
Could we repeat the question again?
Yeah, if you could share with us, if you recall during our work session, we were missing some documents. And if you could share with us what this MOU is, or this approval, approval for the Jelani Educational Services is for.
We're going to have Ms. Mary Jensen, who is our coordinator of secondary special education, come to address those missing documents. Thank you.
Jelani Consultants is an outside contractual psychologist, a school psychology firm. They will be conducting evaluations about, for our students. At this time, we have one psychologist who is on maternity leave and another who has recently resigned. So, this will be our sole source of educational evaluations that will need to be conducted in a timely manner. And this contract does have the evaluations documented by price. They will charge one price for a simple evaluation and another for a more complex evaluation. So, they will actually work with our diagnosticians, they will test our children, they will generate the report, and then they will attend the initial case conference to determine if the child meets eligibility for special education services.
Thank you. Madam President, have a question?
Yes, Trusty Rodriguez.
Ms. Jensen?
Yes, sir.
How many evaluations would this doctor perform throughout the school year?
We have a total not to exceed of sixty-five. We hope that we will not have them doing that many. We hope that when our psychological staff comes on board and returns from maternity leave, et cetera, that we will be conducting our own evaluations in-house.
Trusty Rodriguez, I could clarify on this a little bit. There is an updated version of this agreement that I realized now I did not send him, Ms. Bigum. But the original agreement called for the contractor perform no than, no more than fifty evaluations throughout the school year, and those are the, kind of the simple ones that Ms. Jensen described. There are more complex evaluations, I believe, specifically related to students on the autism spectrum. And so, the contractor charges a higher rate for those, but we've limited that, I think, to twenty-five. So, the updated agreement will reflect those not to exceed amounts, it's just I didn't.
So, it's twenty-five students?
There's fifty of the simple ones and twenty-five of the more complex.
But, so it's not sixty-five?
Seventy, seventy-five.
So, actually, it's seventy-five.
Seventy-five altogether?
I'm sorry, I didn't have the contract in front of me.
Just you said, excuse me, fifty, fifty students? Well, who now, you say?
It will not exceed a total of seventy-five evaluations. Twenty-five could be complex, forty would be simple. The complex will also include cognitive evaluations. We, a psychologist in an annual year, will, will evaluate up to fifty to sixty children. Some psychologists can do more, but.
Thank you. And that comes as a recommendation through who, to have that child evaluated?
An evaluation process is conducted through the MTSS team by the actual building and a referral is conducted. So, all sorts of documentation is brought together, data is collected, we collect a social and developmental history, and then we collect all of the educational data from the building. At that point, the referral goes to the diagnostician or the psychologist, depending how they're working on that. They will review the referral, determine if there is sufficient information to determine if the child does need to be evaluated. And after the referral, then a permission to, to evaluate the child is generated and cut. The parent signs permission for the evaluation and the evaluation commences.
Thank you.
And evaluations must be conducted within fifty school days after permission is signed. So, we have a timeline that's ticking and we have evaluations from last year in which permissions were signed, and we now have a timeline in which to conduct those. So, that's why it's so important to have a psychologist on staff or on contract who is able to help us conduct those evaluations so we can meet legal timelines and deadlines.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the board?
Yes. Mr. Attorney Snow, could you please give us that contract later? Since you said you just received it.
Oh, no, I, we.
Updated it.
Yes, we, we discussed this last on August the sixth. We were discussing it, I think, on the same day as the work session and we reached an agreement, or at least, we reached kind of a final understanding as to the terms. I just didn't send the copy to Ms. Bigum. So, the form that's in the, it's, it's in the form that we typically would use. It's just the numbers need to be updated based on what's in Board Doc.
So, we can copy that, though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I can send it out, I can send it out right now if you want, but yes.
Yeah, just. Yeah, we get it from, I'll get mine from Ms. Bigum, though. You can send it out.
We can send it to Ms. Bigum.
Okay. Yeah, I apologize for that, but that was discussed towards the end of last week, middle of last week.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Thank you. Six point zero eleven, approval of contract renewal. I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I'm just moving quick here. Okay. Can I get a, can I get a vote?
Trusty Gomez?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trusty Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Six, six point eleven, approve of contract renewal for Epic for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for six point eleven?
Madam President, make a motion for six point one-one.
Motion made by Trusty Smith, second by Trusty Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Oh, excuse me, Madam President.
Oh, go ahead.
Attorney Snow, we had this discussion relative to whether the handbook applies to a superintendent or if that's a separate document.
Well, so, did, first of all, did we, we, are we moving ahead to the employee handbook?
Well, it's on the, it's on the agenda next.
It was on six point one-one, is that one removed?
No, we don't, we still on six, six eleven right now.
Six eleven is the epic staffing one.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, we haven't got that. So, so are there any questions for, did we get a motion for six eleven?
Yes, we did.
Okay, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trusty Gomez?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trusty Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Six point twelve, approve of employee handbook for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Now, just Mr. Trust, are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve six point one-two.
Motion, motion made by Trusty Rodriguez?
Second.
Second be my, my, um, Trusty Taylor. Are there any discussion from the board?
Madam President, my question to Attorney Snow.
Yes.
Could you say that again? You're.
Did we, we had had discussion at the work session on the employee handbook and how certain areas in there say that, you know, one must report to the superintendent, but what if that individual is the superintendent? Then does, the handbook doesn't spell out parts where a reporting system goes into place other than he or she would have to report to themselves?
Correct, and I think, although I don't have the board policy pulled up in front of me, I can find it as I'm talking, I think.
Policy fifteen twelve, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, I'll, let me, let me pull that up and I'll try to do things, two things at once here. But I think that the, the short answer to that is that the, the policy, the language in the board policy is identical to the language in the employee handbook and it does state the reporting to the superintendent. So, I think that that's something that we would need to work out, not only by amending the employee handbook potentially, but first amending the board policy. I also think that, in some ways, there was a way to close that loophole by stating that the superintendent would be required to basically report to himself, but then he'd also be required to report to the board, any report that's received. So, and I'm sorry, I'm not pulling the policy as I, but I do recall the discussion. So, I think that's something that the policy committee can address and then, you know, as with anything, the employee handbook would kind of defer to existing board policy.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any more?
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes, Trusty Taylor.
Okay, so I have a question and a concern. My question is, is this a draft or is this like the final handbook?
It should be a draft.
I believe if we approve it today, it'll be the final.
Correct.
Okay.
So, it, it can be a draft at this point, second, second draft.
Right.
But if you approve it, it is the final draft.
And, Dr. McJunkins, it is a living document, so any changes that would have.
Hurry, repeat that.
It is a living document, so any changes that would happen would just need, again, further board approval. In other words, we're not locked into this for the entire school year. Should some law change or something come, we can always amend it.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So, my concern is, the table of index doesn't align with the section. So, there was a particular section I was looking for and the table of index, page thirty-one, refers to the section, personal background checks and mandatory reporting of conviction and arrest. That's actually on page thirty-three. And then, my concern with this section, and I've expressed this before, I, I think the verbiage is a little maybe confusing and a little, just not aligned with the, with the rest of the employee handbook, only because this is an employee handbook. So, an employee handbook means that you're an actual staffed employee. This employee handbook applies to, to actual staff employees. But this section speaks a lot to applicants. So, I don't know if this is the right place for that because it speaks to what should happen with an applicant prior to them being employed and then it also speaks to certifying, you know, under penalty of perjury, yada, 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 as an applicant. But the whole handbook speaks to an employee, so it's just the terminology is, is confusing. Are we, you know, this is for an employee or for an applicant? Those are two different individuals. An applicant is not getting paid, an applicant is not in, in our HR, you know, records, they're not on payroll. So, that, that's misleading, that's confusing. And I know that caused confusion in the past when it came to disciplinary actions and applying progressive disciplinary process. But I think that's something we should look at. That makes me uncomfortable to leave applicant verbiage inside of an employee handbook. I hope I'm making sense. I understand. And we do need to, we will look at that again. The, because in actuality, we do have a policy that if anyone is arrested, they have to report that information to us and they have to keep, keep us updated on the progress of their case. So, therefore, pardon me, I got mitt in my mouth. Therefore, I can understand that we put, we need to add that in here. Well, it's in there, but it's in there speaking to an applicant. And again, it's just distinguishing the difference between an applicant and an employee. So, applicant directives or applicant policies, procedures should not be in an established employee handbook. Got you. Because they're two different people to me in my head. Okay.
Yes, Trusty Gomez.
Point taken.
No, Trusty Taylor, you finished or? Yeah. So, what, go ahead.
I, I, that's a good point, I do agree with the Trusty Taylor.
Point taken, absolutely.
And so, can we table this for now until you have had a chance to?
No way. We weren't going to vote on it.
Revise it.
This is just a draft, hopefully, because we haven't even completed what we asked you for. Didn't you ask for some stuff in there? Yeah, no, so.
Change those items, the things that they asked for.
On page seventeen, thirty-three and thirty-four?
The whole book needs to be re.
Yeah, what page was Mercedes taking? Trusty Taylor, what page were you on?
So, that section's on page thirty-three, but the table of index says page thirty-one.
Yeah, we were supposed to have changed in thirty-three.
Trusty Taylor, the one that you probably have, because you're virtual.
Oh.
I, I handed out the revised copy today. Okay. To, where our, our print manager updated the page numbers and everything. I see. He made the additional changes that the board members requested when we met last time.
Right.
Okay. Yep, I'm, I'm accessing the one on Board Doc, so that, that can be the discord, yep. Okay.
So, this is the right one that we have now, right?
Yes, that, that.
Was supposed to be in seventeen, thirty-three, thirty-four. Okay.
But I, I, we just received this, Dr. McJunkins, so. Is Trusty Taylor's concerns in this current version?
No, what she just stated, no, that's not in this version.
Okay.
Because she just stated it to us. So, we need to go back and revisit that.
Okay.
You also asked for the print to, I think, Trusty Smith asked for the print to be increased on, on, let me see what pages.
Well, the print is bigger.
Oh, yeah, I know the front cover had to be changed, the print had to be changed under the work, Workplace Guidelines, which is on page thirty-six. There was also page, the inclement weather. He increased the font on that and changed the format of it so that it was more visible. That's currently on page forty-seven because it was too tiny to read as a PDF at first, as a small print.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And, I believe that was the only other thing that, I believe, Trusty Gomez mentioned about the same thing that you just mentioned about, and we talked about that, that would have to be something in the hand, the policy or the contract.
Yep.
That wouldn't necessarily be the employee-staff handbook.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, Trusty Rodriguez.
So, we can take a look and the, the committee can reconvene to correct or revise those issues that Trusty Taylor has mentioned.
Appreciate it. Yes, Trusty Rodriguez.
Yes, Ms. McJunkin.
Yes.
In the front, it states twenty-five, twenty-six school year. To my understanding, an employee handbook doesn't have to have the year. Only what's, when it's approved, at the bottom here, you have School Board Trustee Approved on because, because what Trusty Gomez was stating, that an employee handbook is a living document and anytime it's updated, it does have to get approval by the board.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you could just remove that?
Sure.
Yeah.
And it'll only have the adoption date?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other recommendations?
So, I'm assuming that we are, we're, we are approving the draft or are we approving the handbook? Or what are we doing?
We can't approve that.
We're just approving the draft.
So, you, you have a line item in front of you, which is the draft. I do think that I, I would agree with Trusty Gomez. Like, I think the updates, as far as the table of contents that Trusty Taylor mentioned are in the, they're in the print version. So, the print version, I think, from that respect is accurate. I think with respect to more, some of the more substantive things. I, I think, as I'm, you know, dealing with different clients that handle these policies different ways, I think if you're looking at a print version of it, it's a lot easier to kind of get it in final form before you approve it because then it's going to be circulated to everyone. On the other hand, it is a bit pressing because you have employees back in the building and it is intended to cover the school year. So, you know, I, I think that we need to try to make these revisions in fairly short order. But to approve it and then go back and revise it and approve it again, it's, I mean, it's a little bit of just a, kind of an exercise because you're not necessarily approving the whole thing, so you're not going to circulate a hard copy if you know it's going to come back with changes in two weeks. So, the options would be, given that, the options would be to, you know, approve the draft as it's submitted to you, which would take a motion, or to table it for discussion next week, which would take a different motion. It's just a question of which motion.
Madam President, I'd like to remove to table this so that we can have HR review with the input from Trusty Taylor and the rest of the board.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Trusty Gomez and second by Trusty Smith, table. Okay, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trusty Gomez?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Rodriguez?
And that's on the table, yes.
Trusty Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
So, Attorney Snow, what this means is that the employee handbook that's origin, that's been orig, that's been given to employee, well, let me put it this way. We still have an employee handbook that's still out there.
Right.
Just the modification on this one isn't approved yet, correct?
Correct. Yes, I think a lot of your, I mean, as I've looked through this a little bit in the process of reviewing it, I think a lot of your handbook policies are derivative of board policy.
Yes.
So, to the extent that, I guess, something was to come up in the next couple of weeks where somebody would say, I didn't know, or that's not the rule, or whatever the case might be, a lot of it's in existing board policy. So, I think you'd have that to fall back on. I think the handbook is more just a, a more concise version that people have. As it says, it's a handbook to have in your hand. On, and it, and it's designed to be kind of organized to highlight things that people might be thinking of as a higher priority as opposed to having to dig through the board policy to find it.
Board policy always trumps and then the CBA always trumps the handbook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, ma'am, we'll discuss this later.
Okay, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
We did a roll call on the vote to table.
Okay, yes, that's right, we tabled it. Okay, six point thirteen, approval of the bid grammar construction for Washington Elementary School. Guess that's you, Lila. Ms. Lila, Grammar Elementary School. I guess that's Lila, I'm sorry, was that her?
Ms. Simmons will come to address those agenda items, thank you.
You know, agenda items, okay. Which one are we on, I'm sorry?
Grammar, grammar construction.
Five-on-three.
Six point one-three?
Washington?
Yeah, grammar for Washington.
Yes, so, Washington currently boiler system is out of compliance actually with the state and we need to address it before the winter season come in. So, the boiler, as the winter comes in, if we set it to a certain temperature and it gets overheated, it'll kick itself off. So, with this construction that's coming up here, they're going to, each boiler will have their own flue. It will go out through the roof and we will, it won't kick off. It will be in compliance also with the state. When it was done, at that time, it was compliance, now is, it's not in compliance.
Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get approval for six point? Can I get approval for six point thirteen, please?
Madam Secretary, make a motion to approve item six point one three.
Approval made by,
Second.
by Trustee Rodriguez and second by Trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam Secretary?
Yes, uh, Trustee Rodriguez.
Ms. Simmons?
Mm-hmm.
And, and not just with, with this particular group, but is there any way that we can get sort of a, a cat, a five-year plan? Um, some, like, our, for, for example, like our strategic plan, how it's laid out to, to kind of give us an idea of what's coming?
Yes.
Um, but something like, you know, with, with, with the, with the buildings and just wants, sort of see exactly what we're dealing with for the next thirty-five years.
We're currently under, um, assessment. We approved, I do believe, it might have been end of May, beginning of July, we approved a company called Rittman. And this is the company that's going to give us a five to ten-year plan of everything in the buildings, from the HVAC to the floor, to the cabinets, everything. So, yep, so we're on the assessment right now, and they have been in the district going in and out of buildings.
And would this also include energy efficiency and conservation?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Um, six one fourteen, approval of American seal coating for Central High School tennis court.
So as all know that we are in the processes of replacing our, um, I'm sorry, revamping our tennis courts. Um, we have went through the pavement. Now we're going to go through the fence portion, and now we're going to the painting of the tennis courts and the pickleball.
So, yes, okay. So are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for six, uh, fourteen, please?
Madam President, move for approval of six fourteen.
Prove.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Gomez and second by Trustee Rodriguez. Roll call of Madam.
Um, Madam President, I just have one question.
Yes.
Uh, we talked about, I think initially there was going to be two pickleball courts. Is that still the plan, or is it one?
Uh, Coach, courts gording?
Two.
Two.
And is the surface the same as the rest, as the tennis courts? Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Uh, six fifteen, approval contract renewal for Massey Education for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Are there any questions from the, from the audience? Can I get a motion for, uh, six point fifteen?
Madam Secretary, make a motion to approve item six point one five.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by Trustee Taylor. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
No.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
No. Item six sixteen, approval of professional development request. Are there any questions from the audience? Oh, did I, oh, I don't have a.
I'm sorry, six point one six is policies, six point one seven is professional development. Um, at least according to what's in Board Docs.
Okay, so I don't have, what, what, six point six is what now?
Six point one six, sorry, six point one six is approval of the several policies on first reading.
I don't have that agenda.
No, we don't have that.
I don't know why I always don't have a, get a, get an update agenda. Thank you.
Professional development request. Is that where we're at now?
Let's see.
But this one has the same thing. Oh, I'm sorry. So six point sixteen on here is approval of the first reading.
Correct, that's what I was, the, right.
Okay, on this agenda. This agenda here.
That's consistent with what's in Board Docs. I mean, certainly it's your discretion as to what you do, um, you know, as far as considering things or not, but that's what the agenda in Board Docs.
Oh, I'm just saying right here, what I have, that he gave me in my, in my, my booklet. This, Grayling just gave that to me. I don't think I can speak for what I have.
That's.
Okay. So, so this is, so six point sixteen is the first reading of the policies? Is that what that is?
According to the agenda that's posted in Board Docs, yes.
Not on this one.
Oh.
Yeah, I do have it on, on my Board Docs as well.
No, I, yeah, I have one.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll deal with this. We'll get, we'll get a copy. Uh, okay, are there any questions from the audience?
Related to?
Six point sixteen.
Which is, you're considering the policies?
Reading.
Yes, okay.
Yes, approval of the first reading for policies. PO, uh, one four four point one, board compensation. And, uh, are we going to do them one at a time?
Yes.
It's a single agenda item.
Okay, so they're going to be PO two.
We're not, we're doing them one at a time, please.
Okay.
Okay, and, okay, so we're going to do this one first, PO one four four point one. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a, um, uh, motion for zero one four four point one?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item PO, I'm sorry, yeah.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez for PO four, uh, one four four point one.
Second.
Second by Trustee Gomez. Now, are there any questions from the, from the board?
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Smith.
Okay, we're, I'm going to address the policy.
Yes.
Zero point one four four point one, compensation. It's the first reading. I understand that this is the first reading of this policy, but do, I do have some concerns regarding item F on this policy. I also see that the bottom of this policy was generated in twenty-eleven, before we had an elected school board, and was modified on August fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and this item F needs to be discussed further, which I do not agree with. I do not understand. I do understand that the state has updated the basic compensation payable amount per diem, but I feel that the board should discuss if we are all in agreement with the state statute or remain with the per diem uh, until a consensus had been established with the new resolution of this policy. I feel further discussion is needed considering what is going on with funding. And the reason why I'm saying this is because this first reading, this whole policy needs to be redone. Um, and, um, from what I read from this policy, this money, some of this, if we do a per diem, an extra per diem for us, we're taking away from our kids. So I'm not, I'm not really going to say I'm going to go with this right now. So this policy needs to be redone and discussed with our financial advisor and our superintendent.
Yes, because, um, if I'm not mistaken, um, these dollars that they want to give to the board, it's just supposed to have been an increase in what they give us based on teacher salary. So,
Madam Attorney Snow could.
Explain that, uh, that's from the state.
Yeah, Dr. Burnin, Attorney Snow, or?
Maybe Mrs. Snow can explain it.
So the policy as it's drafted is consistent with something that's recommended by Indiana State ISBA, by the School Board Association. Um, there was new legislation that was passed, a new state law, as of July first of twenty-five. Um, that law says that compensation to a school board member cannot exceed, so cannot be higher than ten percent of the lowest salary of a school teacher that's employed by the corporation. And so what we discussed is that would likely be your emergency permit teachers. Um, so that's a, a situation where the board would think about an annual salary that's paid in equal installments. There's also an ability for the board to receive a per diem. Um, that the limit on it is it cannot exceed what the Indianapolis School Board gets for their per diem. I understand that it's confusing. That's unfortunately what the statute reads, and I think the real problem with the statute is it doesn't have an or, an or. So what that means is you could get either the salary by itself, or you could get the per diem by itself, or you could get both. Under the statute, as long as the salary doesn't exceed that ten percent and the, the per diem isn't higher than Indianapolis School Board, you could get both, or you could take either one. And so I asked the attorneys at ISBA about that, and they said that some boards have done one or the other, and they think that some boards have done both. And they kind of think, as I'm sure you're thinking, it has to do with the financial state of the district that they represent, and also what their residents and their voters and families say. Um, so what this policy does, and it's been confusing for us as a committee, it's confusing, I see, for, for us tonight, and it's been confusing when I, when I've spoken to Ms. Simmons about it. Um, this policy just states kind of the upper limits and gives the board the ability to determine its compensation year by year by passing a resolution that says this is what the board's salary and per diem, or whatever it ends up being, is going to look like. So this isn't actually establishing any numbers for the board. This is just kind of setting the framework for the conversation that then you all will have on an annual basis about what your conversation will be. So I think it's awkward in part because it doesn't specifically lay out numbers. It kind of puts it on you to decide that year for year, and the reason, I think, for that is so that you have some flexibility to be able to kind of respond to what your budget is looking like and what your people are saying in terms of how much you're getting paid to be on the board. Um, and so I think it's, it's confusing because, again, it's not setting out specific numbers. It's, it's giving you the ability to figure that out in the future, and also because the statute, again, doesn't tell us really whether it's preferable for you to pick one or the other. It says you could do either or both. So, um, unfortunately, i- it's probably as clear as you're going to get it, unless you want to discuss and enter a policy that just says every year the board's compensation is going to be X, Y, and Z. And if you do that, you can do that, and it'll be applicable year after year. It's just that if you ever come to a point where you need to adjust it, then you go through the policy process. And there's really nothing to kind of dictate that you would do that. By doing a resolution every year, I think what we do is make sure that we have the conversation about the board's compensation every year, and so to me, um, i- it provides you with, I guess, a little bit more transparency, and it provides you with a little bit more flexibility. But that's a, you know, I mean, that's, that's an opinion just based on the conversations that, that I've had and the, and the discussions I've had.
Well, we'll revisit this.
Um, Madam President, I do have a question for Attorney Snow. Uh, with regards to the Indiana Code, were they, because I, I understand that the state gives us a compensation of two, uh, two thousand a year, right? The law has changed.
Yes.
So, as of July first, what, what's confusing to me, and this was also brought up, uh, too, was that, do we look at the certified teacher pay, or do we look at the emergency permit teachers? Because obviously, in our salary schedule, it's going to be a certified teacher pay, which is, I believe fifty thousand was the lowest part of the certified teacher pay. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there, number one. The second thing is, um, we can discuss board meetings in terms of how we, how we, how we get paid by board meetings. I believe the general assessment that we have twice a month, I believe we get like one twenty, a hundred and twenty dollars a meeting. And then, of course, um, all others are like within sixty-dollar range. So the question is whether those two are considered the total compensation of the lowest teacher pay? Or are they just talking about the statute that reflects only the state's compensation, which is not the two thousand, but is now the ten percent lowest teacher pay?
Correct. So, um, I think to answer the first question, I did specifically ask the ISBA attorneys, uh, Lisa Tanzella, I think, was the one who responded, uh, with respect to the certified teacher question, and she did confirm to me, which I shared with the committee, that the, uh, the emergency permit teachers are considered certified for that purpose. So typically, you would look at the emergency purchase, uh, emergency permit. I was dealing with emergency purchases earlier today. Um, the emergency permit salary is, is where you would drive your ten percent. Um, as far as the per diem, um, I do think the statute is, is what amends that two thousand dollar kind of flat rate. Um, as far as the per diem is concerned, I think that the new statute would, i- it's less of a question of how much you get paid and more of a, well, it's both, but it's also an equal question of, of h- how you want to receive your payment. So you could elect, you could vote to have a salary equivalent to the ten percent of the, the lowest teacher salary, and then you wouldn't have to count, you wouldn't count meetings for per diem's sake. You would just get that salary. Or you could do purely a per diem in whatever amount you elected to do, as long as it doesn't exceed the per diem limits that are set by Indianapolis, and that would be your only compensation. Or, from what ISBA is telling me, you could do both. You could say we want the salary and the per diem. Um, and, and so what the statute now does is just set upper limits. But it doesn't, it doesn't say one is preferable over the other, and it doesn't say you have to take both of them. It actually doesn't say you have to take the maximum of either of them. They're, they're stated as not to exceed. So this is just kind of, like I said, it's, it's, you kind of have to think of the policy as just setting the framework that you're going to discuss actual compensation in. And, and I understand that's, it's, it's tricky, and I think it's tricky because of the language of the statute and the, the nature of it. It's, it, there's a few things about it that are, that are a little cumbersome.
And, Madam President?
Yes, now, Trustee.
And I do want to also look at item F. I believe, uh, Trustee Smith actually brought it up, and I just read it. But it does say that board attends community events, school-related events as board functions. Um, and we're supposed to get compensated for that, which I disagree, number one.
I ain't trying to get paid for all that now.
Right, right. No, this is, I'm just throwing it out there. I disagree with that. But, um, she did, uh, Trustee Smith did mention that it was a, this is a two thousand eleven Neola policy. So instead of looking at just the part that ISBA or the template that they may have given you, or Neola, whoever it is, we should look at the entirety of the policy to see how we can adjust the whole framework of all that. Because, yeah, I, I, when I go to community events, you know, I'm going to go, it's, it's, it's a privilege just to go to some of these community events and meet some of the parents and so forth for us, but, um, it's important for us to also do that, too. But I don't want to get compensated for that.
I'm not either.
Yeah, and I know it's, I know it's item F, and I do appreciate, uh, uh, Trustee Smith for bringing it up, as well as Madam President.
Yes, so I think that, um, we'll just revisit this and discuss it, how we want to do it then, right?
Well, your motion currently on the table was to approve it.
Right.
So you could do one of two things. I guess you could, you could make a separate motion to table it, having had more discussion, or you can vote, because it's on first reading, you can vote no.
Yeah.
And that would effectively just mean that we would have to revisit it and bring it back.
Right, so we can vote no on it.
Either one accomplishes the same thing.
Well, Madam President, this, this is only first reading. We're not even actually approving the final draft.
Could also approve it on first reading, and then we.
So by us approving it on first reading, it'll allow the community, as well as us, to chime in on, on the actual policy. So I, I would definitely want to prove it.
Okay.
So we can clean it up.
I think that the, yeah, I think the only thing that you have to be careful of with that is that if you change it so substantially between first and second reading that it, you know, you just have to make sure that everybody's aware of what all the changes are and have had a chance to digest that. So, well, you, you, Trustee Rodriguez is right, and I didn't include that in my list, but yes, you could vote to approve it because it is only first reading, and then we'll have to revisit it in two weeks. And then, you know, the, I guess the advantage of that is then it has to stay on the agenda, so it's going to, it's going to kind of force us to think about it and consider it in a timely fashion so we get it, so we work through it, and we continue to make progress. I think there's some merit to that, too.
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee.
Um, and in respect to, uh, Trustee Rodriguez's comments, I, I would agree with him that there's the third option, but, um, a- at this point in time, I think it might be. But at this point in time, I think it might be better just to table this item and let the policy committee revisit, which I believe we're meeting next Tuesday. I know Dr. Bornet had his input, and Attorney Snow did as well through the, from the legal perspective. So we can, and I believe you spoke to Ms. Simmons as well, correct?
Yes, I did.
Yeah. And so, given that, we can invite Ms. Simmons into the next board policy meeting, and then just start all over. So at this point in time, I'll just go ahead and rescind my motion and make a motion to table this item. I'll second that.
Motion made by Trustee Gomez to table, second by Trustee Smith.
Rodriguez.
Rodriguez. Yes, Trustee Rodriguez. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
Yes. So now, if this is right, the board, the compensation for policy number 2461. And this is the IEP reading here. Right here. Are there any questions from the audience? Okay. Can I get a motion for the policy 2461?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve policy 2461.
Motion made by Trustee Gomez.
I'll second it for first reading.
Second by Trustee Rodriguez. Now, are there any questions from the board?
Just, Madam President, Attorney Snow, just a brief.
Thank you, Trustee Gomez. This policy, in large part, was revised because there is a statute that basically states that we can interfere with the right of a family to have these meetings recorded. However, our policy, being a little bit dated, provided only for audio recordings. So this policy allows for the possibility of video recording and also sets forth a little bit clearer guidance for the staff as far as how families should be advised of their ability to do this, and also how we handle recordings that the school elects to make on its own.
Thank you, Attorney Snow.
You're welcome.
Madam President?
Yes.
Part of the discussion we had with Attorney Snow and Dr. Bornet was to actually build this into the agreement with the parent guardian, whomever, so that they are made aware that they have the right to record these meetings as well. We were going to record them, but Dr. Bornet, I'm sorry if you want to. Head him.
So once the policy is approved, then administration will consult with our legal team in drafting that waiver and that notice for our families, which can be embedded either in the document that we send notifying parents of their rights at a case conference or presented upon attending the case conference.
Are there any more questions from the board?
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee Taylor.
Attorney Snow, if you could help me, I was trying to answer my own questions, and it's kind of stuck. So does this spell out anywhere in the policy if, okay, so we're going to notify the families that they have the right to record, but if they don't have the means to record, do we provide them the means to record? And is that spelled out in the policy?
That is not covered in the policy, I can tell you that much.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee Gomez.
I thought there was a discussion, though, that if we were recording, we would, Dr. Bornet, wouldn't we give them the ability to get a copy of that? I thought that was the agreement.
We did discuss that. We will provide a copy of the meeting to the parent if they don't have a means to record.
That is accurate as well. Yeah, it's in subsection B. About halfway through the paragraph, it says if the corporation. So it says if the corporation elects to record it, then the parents, guardians, or custodians have a right to receive a copy. So I guess that's a little different because that's at the corporation's discretion. I don't know that it specifically mentions that the parents could request the corporation to record it on their behalf. But I think if the corporation's making a practice of recording all of them, then the parents would be entitled to a copy.
Yeah, this should be in the safeguards that they give these parents as part of their rights, as well as the policy. Right? Okay. So any more discussion?
Just a sus-.
Just one final question, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is there a retention period for the recording? So like, say, if a parent comes two years down the road and say, hey, I want to see, I want, you know, access to the recording from my meeting I had a year and a half ago, will we still have it available? Is there a retention period, or?
So the policy states that the recording is part of the educational record and is maintained in accordance with state and federal law. So I think, I'm thinking for completeness of the educational history and probably taking FERPA into consideration and all that, yes. Dr. Bornet, sorry, I stepped over you.
No, I was just going to add that we will probably be governed by our general retention policy. If we're recording it using electronic media, et cetera, and storing it, so it would be governed by that policy as well.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Madam President, this is just, this is in response to Dr. Bornet's request to address the change in law and recommendation by the ISBA. That's it. I'm sorry, no, it's just, it wasn't a question, it was just, yeah.
Yes, make a statement. Okay. Now, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
Yes. Same number, 616, policy number 3,000, timekeeper and staff accountability. Are there any questions from the audience? Oh, yes, it's in the handbook. Yeah. Can I get a motion for the policy 3,000, timekeeping and accountability?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy 3,000, timekeeping and staff accountability.
Motion made by, yeah, motion made by Trustee Gomez. I mean, motion made by Trustee Gomez. Second, second by Trustee Smith. Now, any questions from the board?
Madam President?
Madam President?
Oh. Yes, Trustee Taylor.
Dr. Bornet, thank you. Dr. Bornet, I know we were exploring system options for clocking in. Have we done any, anything?
We have not started the committee to explore the different options. When we set that committee, it will involve multiple groups of stakeholders, including teachers, administrators, and support staff. We'll work with our AFT, I'm sorry, we'll work with AFT and SEIU on that committee as well.
Okay. And lastly, did we need to address, and I wasn't at the last policy meeting, any addressed commuting in between schools? Is that going to be factored in or considered as part of this policy?
I don't believe we discussed commuting between schools at all. So our prevailing protocol regarding staff that has to commute, we would have to talk with HR and those staff that are impacted. But that's a small number of staff that are impacted.
Okay.
I think, though, that we do speak to this because I think we talk about arrivals, departures, and transfers between buildings throughout the school day. And I think one of the purposes of this, so it's kind of a two-part answer to the question. The first part is, this is language that's already existing that was approved back in May. The green highlighting that you see is the only thing that's changed from then. But the existing language states that there is kind of an interest in safety and accountability, and also kind of keeping track of who's coming and going between buildings, how many people we have in a building at any given time. So I think there was some consideration of that. The changes that are recommended today are primarily just to define ghost employment and kind of clarify that this policy is intended also to combat that. So it's existing language that talks about, I think speaks to your question a little bit about commuting between buildings throughout the day.
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee.
I would agree. And I know we talked a lot about different options here. And one of them was, you know, the, some employees may be moving from building to building, and do they need to continue checking in and out? And that was, I believe, where we left it, that that would be a requirement for anybody's commuting between, back and forth between buildings. And the other thing that this policy really does is just kick off the opportunity, as Dr. Bornet mentioned, for him to form a committee and then determine what mechanism we're going to use, whether it's a swipe in or digital off your phone or what have you. So this just gives him kind of a green light to go ahead and form his committee.
So are there any more questions? Because I just had a question, Mrs. McJunkin. Did you have something you want to say? Well, I want to know, should it be in the handbook?
Good point.
I know it, but it might be.
First, do I have permission to ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. I was just curious, and I've seen in some districts where they do swipe in, swipe out. You have people who do go, teachers who go in between buildings. Some of these teachers are paid stipends based on mileage radius to and from those buildings. And then administrators, on Cronos clocks, they swipe in one time because administrators are required to be at meetings and different things throughout the day. And you have them on teacher contracts, which is seven hours per day. And so it just doesn't, it doesn't add up because many times they're in the buildings 10 hours, 12 hours, and what have you. So I would hope the committee considers all those things when they make these changes.
I don't think, I don't think that, we only have a 3,000 school population. So I don't think that all what you're saying, that may be for a big corporation, somebody going over here and over there. I don't think that would pertain to us.
Oh, they just mentioned that we have teachers that go between buildings.
I know they do, but I'm just still saying that it's not, I don't think that it's a lot of them that does that. That's what I'm saying.
And, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was just going to make mention that, and with Dr. Bornet, and I had been talking about this for a little while. One of the concerns would be staff accountability, but also security. If there's an emergency at a building, if we have, you know, X amount of kids and, you know, 55 staff members there, we want to make sure we have 55 staff members coming out. So there was accountability, and it's also security and safety.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Good point.
Yes, Rodriguez, did you have something?
Oh, no, I just, I just said, good point. But I do have one.
Yes.
And it's just a comment. I think the, I think here it also states that the superintendent will be charged with the responsibility of identifying and procuring that, and implementing that system. So it's all up to you, Dr. Bornet.
Okay, Trustee Rodriguez, his comments permitted by him. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes. They got me confused. What are you talking about? Are we going to prove this up?
Yeah, we're proving it for first reading.
The policy on first reading, the changes.
Okay, whatever, yeah.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
Yes. Okay. So now we'll go to the, okay. You want to go to handbook? Okay, 617, approve of professional development request. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion, please? Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for? 617? Yes, 617. Motion made by Trustee Smith, second by Trustee Rodriguez. Are there any comments from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
No.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
Yes. Now, we have 618, approval of the personnel report. Are there any questions from the audience? Are there any, can I get a motion from the board? 618, personnel report.
Madam Secretary, make a motion to approve item 6.18.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez. Did you want to say something?
I just said second.
Oh, you, oh, you seconded. I'm sorry, I thought she was sticking over there. Are there any discussions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
No. Now, can we have our public forum?
Do we have people who have requested to speak, I assume?
Well, you just have one person.
Oh, you want it?
Oh, you want to cut it off? Okay, he don't want to speak. There's no public forum. Okay. Trustee remarks. Trustee Rodriguez, you have something to say?
Just, just one.
Yes.
I'm excited for the students going back to school. I think a lot of the programs that we put in place throughout the summer, I know it's been a very long summer for us school board members, but I'm just, I'm just happy that we're here and we're ready to open doors for our students so that they can achieve and try to overcome as many obstacles as we can to making sure that the students are there just for the reading and for the learning. Thank you.
Trustee Gomez, you would like to say something?
Just, maybe Dr. Bornet could talk on this. 6.05 was the approval of contract renewal for Geminus. I know there was a question about Geminus and our partners next door. Do you want to explain what this policy is for approval versus the partners?
I'm sorry. Would you like for Ms. Daniels to come to explain that, Trustee Gomez?
That'd be fine.
Yes. So there are a number of partnerships we have with Geminus. One of the one that is being reviewed tonight or approved tonight was the partnership we have under the Parent Cafe umbrella. So Ms. Daniels is best equipped to speak to the specific partnership.
And Ms. Daniels, it was only just to clarify the difference between this approval and our partners next door.
Okay. So Geminus Community Partners is the part that we're approving for the Parent Cafe. It is a wraparound service that I was speaking of earlier that provides mental health, individual, group, whatever the need of the family is, and also resources that they offer to the community at large.
Thank you. And just continuing, I appreciate your overview, Dr. Bornet. I do have some questions, and you don't have to answer them now. But I know we had Sylvan as a partner with us last year. And I kind of would like to see if our scores moved in either direction with the assistance of Sylvan. Also, because of the ongoing facilities issues that we've had, I've asked for a copy of our cost overruns. So again, you can provide that when you get a moment. But I just want to close with a post I saw from another school district. Missing eight days of school per year means children are less likely to read at grade level by third grade. And Dr. Bornet, I think you mentioned that 83% first day, 86% attendance rate on first day. We want to encourage, you know, attendance at school throughout the year. But certainly, you know, data suggests that. that missing eighteen days of school, children are less likely to read at grade level by third grade, and it gets worse from there, as you know. I read a quote that says, "A man without books is like a body without a soul." And with that quote, I just want to remind the audience, those viewing, that one of our teachers, Mr. Dunsel, has been asking, requesting books for his class, and if you're inclined to do so, it'd be great if you could assist him in his project and our teachers throughout the school year for whatever their needs may be. That's it, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Smith, trustee, I mean, Gomez. Trustee Smith, please. Excuse me. I just like to just say, okay, I'm sorry. I just like to say, welcome back, students. Welcome back, teachers. This is going to be a phenomenal year. The board, we're going to work together to make this district work, along with our superintendent. We're going to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. I just want to say, welcome back. Put your best foot forward. And I love you, and I appreciate everything that you're doing. And, oh, yeah, Sylvia Alvarez, I want to say, kudos to you, girl. You did the doggone thing. Yes, you did.
Well, Madam President, I want to recognize Principal Ransfer as well. I know you were kind of left out of the data that was presented earlier, but we see you. Thank you for all your work over there.
Oh, wait a minute. What did you say about Mr. Larissa now?
No, I mean, there was no data to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but, you know, I want to recognize her.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Smith, you could continue. Well, thank you. Just cut me off. And welcome to all of our new employees. I know that you all are going to put your best foot forward. I have confidence in you that we're going to make this CTE class work. I know that we are, the principal at Lincoln is going to get everything straightened out. Our kids are going to do very well at Lincoln. They've always done very well, and I know he's going to take them to another level. I just want you to know that Lincoln is in my area, so nothing can stop me from coming in there, checking on you. I don't have to have a pass. So, I just want to say, congratulations to you all, Ms. Jensen, all of you all. I know it's been a struggle. I know it's been a hard summer. It's over. Now, let's put our heads together, put our prayers together. Let's get our cardinal spirit back, athletic department, everybody, let's come and work together in order, because we can do this. I know we can. So, God bless you, and we're going to have a blessed year. And I'm done. Trustee Taylor.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just going to start off with saying, kudos to everyone on the success of the back-to-school rally. It was an absolute success. I think the location was perfect, and I would like to encourage us to consider having it there again next year. Sylvia, great job. I know you worked with the huge team. It was all hands on deck. But I know you were the go-to person. I saw people pulling you left and right, and you remained with a smile, and you were, you were just present and available to everyone. So, I appreciate you. I mean, the vendors were really engaging with the community. They were having so much fun, and I was glad to see many new vendors out. I feel like we had a lot more vendors out this year than last year, which that is just evidence of growth. So, again, good job to everyone, the entire school district, because, again, it was all hands on deck. The event also highlighted an opportunity, though, however, and I'm tying it into back-to-school rally on Parent University, it highlighted an opportunity to better reach out to our Spanish-speaking families. I will have to say that. At the Parent University, Ms. Sochi Medina, she gave an excellent EL program presentation, and, you know, and I know about the EL program, but I really wanted to, like, just divulge in it and really understand it. So, she really broke it down. But my disappointment was is that there were only two parents in there, and she gave so much valuable information, and there were only two parents in there, and she gave that presentation like it was a full session. However, there were a lot, I mean, an abundance of Spanish-speaking-only families at the back-to-school rally, which told me there was a disconnect somewhere. I mean, I even stepped in, and I was translating for several families. So, I just want to, you know, put that out there. We need to, we need to address that. We need to address that and see how we could do better in bridging that gap next year. However, I want to recognize someone that impressed me and really shocked me, and I was, like, wowed, and that is Ms. Mary Jensen. I don't think, she didn't see me, but I was perusing the hallways at Parent University, and she was actually engaging with a Spanish-speaking family, and she was speaking fluent Spanish with them. And just assisting them, and the families, you could tell that they were, like, just so grateful that they had someone giving them, you know, undivided attention. But the fact that she was fluently speaking Spanish really, really blew me away. So, thank you for that. Again, I was impressed, and that really put a smile in my heart. Lastly, just thank you all so much for your continued prayers and your support as I continue to navigate the loss of my father. I am still out of the country, and I will not return until Friday. But in honor of my dad, who would have wanted me to commit here tonight and not neglect my responsibilities, is why I joined the meeting tonight. So, thank you again. I just want to wish our school district a year filled with growth, achievement, and much, much memorable moments that make it a cardinal year to remember. And I pray that this year brings us blessings and every resource that we need to succeed. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, trustee Taylor. Thank you. Dr. Burney, you have anything to say?
I do not. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. I have something to say first, before I forget. Trustee, I mean, Mrs. Biggum, before I leave, can you get me on a regular agenda before I leave, before I leave here?
I have one.
Okay. Yes, I want to welcome all of our students back to school. I did have the opportunity to get up and visit four schools. I went to Block School. Then I went there from Washington. From there, I went to Lincoln, and I went to pre-K school. So, I was able to see all the joy of all the students that was able to come back. I also did see some of the principals that were there to greet the children, vice principal that was there. I talked to some of the parents that was there, and so, it was really a joy. And I'm praying, that I've been praying for, that we do better by our children. I know that Dr. Burney went over the I-Learn scores and what have you not, but I don't think that we've moved a notch, to be honestly. I think that there's lots of work that needs to be done, and I keep saying that we need to have people to be more focused on what, on our children. We spend a lot of time, like I say, on doing things that does not benefit our children at all, and this is why they lose out. We need to change faces. We need to change the way we do things. Things do change, but we don't change the individuals. We keep the same, same behavior, same things go on and on and on, and I could go on and on and on, too. But I think that I have made my point. I got my point across when I do speak for the little ones, for the middle-aged ones, or whatever. But, but back to something that you espoused it on, trustee Gomez, Silver Learning Center, we did finally get someone in our school district that we have been approving for years and giving title, well, the state gives them title dollars, such as they give us ours. But this is a school that has been always utilizing their state dollars to give their children better tutoring services. And finally, we were able to get it. But now, I don't hear anything about it. We keep on approving Silver Learning Center for other school districts, so apparently it must be working. But for some reason, we don't think that our kids do the best. We need to do the best of the best for our children, stops slighting them with things that we think is best. And it's not, you know, we keep on doing the same stuff over and over. So, I would like to get some information from Dr. Burney as to what, where are those scores at, the Silver Learning Scores? We need to have the, I'm going to actually do a work session with the person that was, that was doing this Silver Learning Center in our school district, and also for our truancy. I would like to have a work session for that individual to come in as well, to see why we're having so much absenteeism in our school district. So, I have some concerns. I really do have some concerns, just like every other board member that's here that have concerns as well. So, with that being said, I'm just going to close on that note and be prayed of. So, our next meeting, our next meeting will be August twenty-sixth, but the location will be announced, and it will be at six o'clock. Can I get an adjournment, please?
Madam President, make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Adjournment made by trustee Rodriguez, seconded by trustee Gomez. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now, I forgot, Dr. Burney, here's my, what is the next newsletter going out to the public? Okay, well, here's what I said that I would write about Mrs. Alvarez, what a good job that she has been doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.